Good afternoon. I'd like to call the Forsyth County Board of Education meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, October the ninth, and it's four o'clock. If you will please join me with, for the invocation and pledge. Thank you. Dear God, where there is conflict, give us a spirit of reconciliation. Where there is separation from you, give us a renewal, renewed sense of your presence. Where there is pride, give us humility. Where there is a judgmental spirit, give us a spirit of acceptance and grace. As a country, we need to do all these things. We ask for your discernment to see ourselves as we really are and the courage to continue to make decisions that would be at the foundation for our students to make wise choices in the future. We need them to be well-rounded, to be good students as projected in the learner profile, so that when they're leaders in the future, that they will know that you were there for them and will give them the courage to make a difference. Amen. Salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have it for your union agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Salute.
Second motion for Tom, a second for Kristen, all in favor. Ananmas. At this time, I'll have presentations. The first will be with Joey Perkel for the 2019-20, 2020-21 school calendar drafts.
That was a hard one.
Come out for once.
Yeah, I just can't put it. That was not an easy one to say.
Good afternoon. I want to present to you the draft calendars for, these are student calendars for 1920 and 2021. So we'll start with 1920. I can pull that up.
It's great to see all the input, Joey, from the different LSCs.
Right. We did have a lot of input from local school councils. Just to remind you that, you know, as far as the process goes, we asked local school councils to provide input to then develop the draft that we put out on the website for community input, staff input, and all of that. So these are the drafts based on local school council input. So again, I'll start with 1920. Based on local school council input, they, for 1920, again, this is schools starting on August the first, a Thursday, they suggested, one of the suggestions was to move October the sixteenth and the seventeenth early release days to October the twenty-third and twenty-fourth. And then we also to move the Professional Learning Day, October the eighteenth, to October the twenty-fifth. This allowed two things. One was that it gave more time between the fall break and when those early release days were occurring. Plus, it also, after I made sure and talked to Fonda about this, it also gives teachers a little more time to prepare for those early release conferences at the end of the nine-week grading period. Where they were before was pretty close, and they had said that they would appreciate a little bit more time. So those were two reasons for that. We did, we also moved January the seventh Professional Learning Day from, this is again feedback from local school council, to move the January seventh Professional Learning Day to March the thirteenth. And we moved the March thirteenth Early Release Day to March the twelfth. Some of those comments and reasonings, reason for that is that they felt that they, while they appreciated the winter break, but they did feel like that once that was over, then they were kind of ready to get back. And so...
You heard that from parents.
Yeah. So we were able to move one of those days for that.
Also been discussion that March was the only day there was really no break.
Right. And it did, and it did do that as well.
And that would be probably a good time for having a planning session for teachers in preparation for the testing season that's coming up.
Right. Yes, that's true. And I think those were the only changes that we made for, those were the only changes, 1920, from local school council. And again, that is, again, both of these calendars are the same as this year, 179 student days. And so that's a ninety-day first semester and eighty-nine-day second semester. Okay, so then for 2021, this was a little bit more complicated. And so I will go through that. So for 2021, we moved the start date, this was the start date of August the third, which was on a Monday. And I got a whole lot of feedback from local school councils that they did not like starting on a Monday. They wanted to start on a Wednesday or a Thursday. So we moved the start date from August the third to August the fifth. We moved August the twenty-eighth Early Release Day to September the fourth. This was really an oversight on my part, because if you remember last year, for this year's calendar, we made that change so that parents had asked for that, so that that Friday Early Release Day was the Friday before the holiday.
The holiday.
And that was just kind of an oversight really on my part. So I did fix that. We moved December the eighteenth, the last day before winter break, to the December the twenty-second. We moved May the twenty-fifth, the last day of school, to May the twenty-sixth. We moved, again, the October Early Release Conference days and that Professional Learning Day, the fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth. So we moved those down a week, just like we did in the previous year, the 1920 calendar. We moved January the fourth. I'm sorry.
Of 1920. Oh, boy, he's gone back in time.
That was way back. We did move January the fourth to student staff, the student staff holiday due to moving the end of the first semester from December the eighteenth through the twenty-second. We added a Professional Learning Day on March the twelfth. Teachers typically got this day at the end of winter break along with the other one, but same reasoning for that as was on the 1920-year calendar. We moved March the twelfth Early Release Day to March the eleventh, so that we, because we had, we put the Professional Learning Day on the twelfth. And we moved fall break from September the twenty-eighth through October the second back to the last full week of September, which is typically when we have had our fall break. And that is first semester eighty-eight days, second semester ninety-one days, still total of 179 school days. So again, this took into consideration the local school council feedback to create these two drafts. They will go on to the website tomorrow. Jennifer will post those. We will be accepting feedback, community and staff feedback through October the twenty-sixth. And then I will present a draft calendars to you at your work session on November the sixth, and then come back to you on November the thirteenth to ask you for approval of these two school calendars.
So in that second year, the winter, the winter break will start on the twenty-third of December and go through the fifth, correct?
That's correct.
And what was the reasoning for changing it to then?
Well, because we had to...
Start.
Get the days in.
To get the days in to end the first semester to winter break.
Okay.
Which is important.
To get the eighty-eight, okay.
Yeah.
It's like so much of the calendar hinges on making sure that first semester is done for the high schoolers, so the midweek start is kind of a give for the elementary parents and the fourth and four-year-olds and five-year-olds starting school. That whole week is just a lot. So this is a nice compromise.
And coincidentally, the Senate Subcommittee is starting work on studying the calendar, so we'll be following that closely.
In the Tourism Committee? I'm sorry, the Senate.
There are educators on that committee, is there?
There aren't. There's none, correct.
There were a lot of questions from local school councils about the fall break being mostly into the first week of October. So if Nathan can explain that, so I'm going to have Nathan to, just in case you have parents who ask you that. This is a one-year-only type thing, but Nathan can explain that much better than I can, so I'll ask him to do that.
Must have something to do with athletics.
Yes, it does.
Yes, it does.
Because that's...
Thank you, yeah. So we did move fall break one week for 2019. Reason being, for the past several years, the Georgia High School Athletic Association has started first game season the week of August seventeenth. Due to contract negotiations and finishing the state championship games, they've moved the week back one week to compensate Mercedes-Benz. So we don't start games in 2019 until August the twenty-third. That meaning it throws it off kilter with fall break. Schedules are already set, which would mean that we would play games when no one's in school.
Right.
And of course, Denmark does do that now, because they accepted in different region being in a different classification. That would make a major impact on what we've been able to do the last few years by having that one year to move it into the last few days of September, October, and then be back on a new scheduling cycle. For 2020, we would be back on track.
What about Denmark? Will it, when will it be in the same division?
As they grow and get bigger in student population and hopefully grow back into size with the Forsyth County Schools, we're probably looking at a couple more reclassification cycles before they hit that point.
Okay. Two more years. The current, last, maybe two cycles. Yeah, the current cycle we are on right now is only, it's a two-year cycle.
Correct. We have one more year next year, and they'll go through, we'll begin reclassification next spring, or actually, next January. Not this coming January, but...
It'll take a while.
Yeah, it's going to take a little bit of time. But they're going to grow, and eventually it'll work in. So then that's the difference, that why they couldn't work that in to get them. And guys, we've got to watch too. There will be some differences in reclassification where our regions could get larger. So we could see a combination of Fulton and Forsyth again, because they're going to shrink us. We went to seven classifications, they're going to bring it back to six starting next classification. So a lot of work to be done there and figure out. So being able to pull spring break or fall break off may get even more difficult for us in the future.
So they're going to put it back? I mean, how are they going to do that?
They're going to shrink classifications and the lower classifications because the numbers are smaller.
Okay.
And so instead of being seven, we would become the six at the top.
Gotcha. So it's not us, it's the ones below us.
Yes, no.
But it would still be just like spring break. I mean, there's activities going on.
There is, there is. It's just...
You just can't always not have anything.
Yeah. And luckily, we've been able to do a lot for the last four years and this year. And so next year will be a little different, and we can maintain that because we've already got those schedules set. Once we do another reschedule, we will be able to say this week is fall break, coaches try to work off of it as possible. But we need to get to 2020, 21 before we can do that. This becoming 1920 next year.
So next year will be okay then, because of the...
By moving one week.
By moving that week.
Yeah, by leaving it in October.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. I'll look at that one.
I just, I have to say though, I just think it speaks volumes again about the process we go through locally to take into consideration the feedback we get from our local school councils and our community at large. That's really the way a school calendar should be built, because we're trying to meet the needs of our community. So hopefully, we'll be able to continue to do that.
And what our needs are are not going to be the same for some of our South Georgia.
That's right.
And like we were telling Joey, every, it's a cycle of the calendar. Every six or seven years, it's going to be a little more challenging just because of the way that first week falls. So it just, this was the harder years to do.
It is. And thank you for considering the two-year. I think that will be very meaningful to our community as well in terms of planning. So I'm glad we were able to get back on a two-year, two-year schedule.
Absolutely.
Can we do ten years so the state can...
Oh, that's great. Okay, now we have a much anticipated report on the literacy program with Don Phillips, Rebecca Johnson, and Joe Cabodony.
And we must tell you, when we all walked in the room, this was a little intimidating. Thank you. And I do think I speak for my colleagues, as Joe pulls this up, that we appreciate the time to share the work that we've been involved with, actually, the past several years. As you know, Rebecca Johnson, elementary ed director, my buddy here.
Joe Cabodony, middle school director.
And Don Phillips, high school director.
And we refer to ourselves as the three amigos, and I'm so thankful for friends who share the passion for literacy like I do. So with that said, I will tell you that it was two years ago, the fall of 2016, if you were, will indulge me, I'll go back in time also, that Ms. Harrison said to me, Rebecca, the data indicates, and the principals are asking, that we have a K-12 literacy initiative. And so the first thing I did is I went to our principals, and I put together a committee of leaders. So I call that leveraging leadership in our system. And I asked them, how do you see this occurring in our system? What does it mean to have a K-12 literacy plan? And I'd like to open up this afternoon with sharing with you the work of our principals and, of course, giving them full credit. The first thing the principals did is they developed a continuum of literacy, saying that literacy is a developmental journey that our students take. It starts with early literacy, and then it moves to intermediate literacy. These two stages happen in our elementary schools. From there, we go to early adolescent, which is a middle school, and then we end up with adolescent and young adult, which are, of course, the high school experiences with literacy. And we often refer to those as disciplinary literacy, where the core work of our elementary school is teaching children to read, to write, to think. As we move into the secondary level, and you guys please jump in, it's more about all the disciplines. So it's not about literacy at the secondary level is ELA. It's not. It's a way of knowing. It's a way of learning. The next thing our principals did is they developed a scope of the work, and they put it into six phases. They wondered why we've done such incredible work in the past with literacy, but it has not been sustained. And that worried the principals. And so they asked us to begin, to put a committee together and to begin with research, and to go back and study all those that have come before us and their work. And we did that, to know where we had been. And then the principals asked us to put a stake in the ground in regard to literacy through research to establish a why. As Simon Sinek says, what is your why? Why are you doing the work? Figure that out before you determine your what and your how. And so we did that. And then we moved to phase four in developing guidance for our schools that would help them put legs on the work, because the expectation and the beliefs are rigorous. So how do we make that happen? And currently, we are in phase five. This year is the initial year of implementation, and we are working on professional learning for leaders first and then for teachers. Before we started the work, we looked for help, and we got guidance from ASCD and Scholastic, and we put together a comprehensive action plan. The work of the principals and this action plan have served as the foundation of everything we're going to share with you today. We've not veered from it, and we are working the plan, but it's a multi-year journey.
Okay, so our next step, we really want to discuss, we understand the scope of literacy is big work. And so for us to leverage that work, it really needs to be a collaboration of many different stakeholders. Joe, if you could flip to the next slide. So we've included all players in Forsyth County Schools as we launch into literacy. We have what we call a literacy task force, which really started with Rebecca's group a couple of years ago, that really studied the foundation of literacy. From there, we've taken that literacy task force, and now that we're in the implementation phase, we've broken into two groups. So we have an elementary literacy task force and a secondary task force, and we're designing the work in collaboration with those leaders and how that professional learning happens for our leaders and our teachers. Then that, the task force that we're working with now are really, we're working to design school, or job embedded supports for literacy, aligning a district focus for literacy, and providing training and resources for, for our leaders. This is also working its way to the school level as well, as each school has literacy teams. And so we're working in combination with our leaders, teaching and learning, our content specialists, and directly with our school leaders and our teacher leaders in the building to make literacy a collaborative effort. So Rebecca was mentioning to you the literacy sequence, from early literacy to young adults. And so the work that her group did a couple of years ago really was taking the, the literacy focus into the items that you see on the right, which are really the beliefs and vision for literacy and what that looks like. And if you, and if you, you've got your binder with you, so I want to reference that, there's a portion there that has these beliefs and is sequencing. But if you look at some of those beliefs, what you're going to notice, you can...
Are you sure?
Yeah. I need to talk with my hands.
Okay.
If you look at those beliefs, you're going to see the learner profile and the attributes and those characteristics of the learner profile come alive in the work that we're doing with literacy. You're going to see that through social, emotional learning, personalized learning, culture and climate of the schools. Literacy is, is really a fusion of all of those together. It's mobilizing families and community towards a focus on literacy. It's tier one, research-based instruction, and it's creating a skill set for our students to not only be successful with the learning that's happening in the buildings, in buildings at this time, but to build them a foundation for success once they leave us.
I'm just so impressed with the words you write, and the beliefs are just everything that's in the learner profile. It's so great to see it meshed together.
Thank you.
It really is great.
So in that phase that Rebecca was talking about in the, in the launching, we provided our school leaders and our teachers with resources about what literacy looks like at the elementary and the secondary level. The first thing I want to mention to you, and this is also in the binder that we provided, is the elementary literacy playbook. It's really, it's a digital resource. We have printed it for you to look at, but it's really not meant to be printed and to, because we don't want someone to print it and put it on a shelf. We want it to be a living, breathing, ever-evolving document for our teachers. So we provided this to them electronically. We sometimes refer to as the playbook as a car manual for literacy. When you get a new car, you don't read the manual from cover to cover. But when there's a certain aspect that you need to know what to do with that vehicle, then you refer to the playbook and look specifically about how to do that. So if you've got a new car, you want to figure out how to sync your Bluetooth to the, your Bluetooth phone to your, to your, to your car, then you're going to go to the manual. So the playbook really has strategies and resources that target specifically the learning of literacy. And then on the secondary level, and as Rebecca said, secondary literacy is really a way of knowing. On the, in the elementary, the work of elementary really, and its core essence is literacy. And then once they have that foundation for literacy, then as we get into the secondary, it becomes more about content. And so we created what we call quick guides, and this is really to focus in on content and how we leverage literacy techniques for that content, because literacy is going to look different depending on what the content. So we provided these resources. These are also in your binder. I believe they're in the very back section. But these are tools that our school leaders and our, our teachers can use to explore opportunities on how literacy can be embedded in their content. The other thing I wanted to mention to you is that every teacher in our building on the secondary level has a quick guide. If they teach math, they currently have a math quick guide in their hand. The other thing is that we provided a set of quick guides for all of our leaders as well, so that they can support, as their instructional leaders, and they need to support literacy, they have these tools as references. There's also links in there. I know we've given to you, those to you in a hard copy, but we also provide these to them electronically, so the hyperlinks are also active, so they can get to other research and information.
Are these links also, I'm sure they are, but the group of people like Megan Farmer that are trying to get the IT'S Learning platform more integrated in all the classrooms, so she's, they've got these resources too, to back up what you're trying to do as well?
Exactly. I'm so glad you mentioned IT'S Learning. So we created a Forsyth County Literacy IT'S Learning Course. That houses all of our resources, including these quick guides, so that teachers can get to all the quick guides and all of the hyperlinks. But also, what we've done is we've created a course that anyone can self-enroll in, in Forsyth County, and they have all of our tools, whether it's a principal, assistant principal, an instructional coach, or a teacher. They have access to all of our resources. So all of the professional learning that we're doing at the district level and at principal meetings and assistant principal meetings, those are then available for the school leaders if they want to replicate those or use pieces of those as they, as they train their teachers. Or their literacy team uses these resources to train their teachers as well. The other thing I want to mention to you is that the IT'S Learning resource page is also broken down into elementary and to secondary for resources for them. The playbook is there, the quick guides are there. And then on the secondary level, we've created folders, and our content specialists in teaching and learning are also looking and researching the designing work and placing that in there. So there's literacy that is actually targeted specifically to their content area.
Great.
Awesome. All right, next is the newest amigo of the group here. So the three things I'm going to talk about are the data behind our work, our implementation plan, and then the cycle of improvement that we're always in as leaders. So first, the data here on the screen that you see is our F and P from the spring of eighteen. As you can see, we do have students in grades one and two who are below grade level, and this goes back to what we said earlier about all by third grade, that we want our students to be proficient readers, so it's very important that these students are part of this work as we move forward. So here we have our, again, we just targeted ELA, but all subject areas are obviously a part of this work, the end-of-grade milestone data that you have here. To read this chart, the ones in parentheses are the student numbers exactly in grades three, four, and five, at the beginning, developing level, and then the total for the district, and then you see the Georgia total. While we still score, you know, better than the Georgia, but we do have, a lot of students are still in that beginning and developing phase as readers in three, four, and five. And then here we have continuous data of grades six, seven, and eight, again, with the same number showing, and focus your attention on the total at the bottom of seventeen-hundred kids at the beginning reader level and five thousand at developing. So that's why I really feel this is, what we're doing here is very important work in far as moving kids forward, to helping our kids become better readers in this five-year plan that we're going to show you. And then at the ninth and eleventh grade level, this is really continuation of the data, and obviously, this is about the skills that they're learning at, at these courses. And it's really, again, looking at the numbers in grades nine and eleven for these courses and of course, the beginning and developing students, these are skills that are going to affect them for their whole life. So we really want to make sure that we're really looking at this data across the system to ensure that we're really helping all students with their learning. So next, this is in your notebook, I believe. This is our five-year plan. To help you read it, we start from the bottom as our foundational here. On the left side, starting from the bottom all the way up, is our SEL work. We're focused on cultural this year in both the elementary and secondary level. And it's all connected from the bottom all the way up. It was very intentional when we created these. In the middle, we have our instructional focus, which is instructional planning this year, both at the elementary and secondary level. And again, all this that we're doing in the foundation here is all tied into the PL that Don and Rebecca both talked about. All schools have this information. Their, the secondary literacy teams and elementary teams have this. They were given it to a DCD in July. And it's also in their IT'S Learning Course, so they have that readily available for them. And then the right side is the literacy focus. And as you can see, for elementary, it's balanced literacy for this year, and in secondary academic discourse. You also notice that the elementary is a little more fluid, because they've had more time to work. And so Donna and I are really focusing on these secondary task force and the school-based teams to really get them to where we need them to be. So we're really have an intentional focus this year. And then looking at the school improvement plan, we're always looking to improve our work to support the schools, ultimately, the students that we serve. This is a living, breathing document that, like Rebecca mentioned, and, and the part that will sustain the work is when we look at the school improvement plans, that schools will be developing for nineteen and really getting in those schools and, and working with administrators and leadership on these plans, and then looking at their data, what they put in the plans to really drive our work moving forward for the following school year. We're also talking about this when we deliver PL to them, to really thinking about this literacy as part of their goals for improvement plans.
Okay. That's great.
So to begin wrapping up, I will tell you that when I started this journey in 2016, I thought of literacy as reading, writing, speaking, listening, and viewing. It was a very simplistic view. It's what I knew at the elementary level. But over the two years, I have learned so much about what literacy truly is and how critical it is to our students in the system. Sometimes we're criticized because we say we want 100% of our... Sometimes we're criticized because we say we want one hundred percent of our students reading proficiently. We want them to be highly literate. We want to develop literate minds. And I will respond to that, who are you willing to leave behind? Because in today's world, in the world of tomorrow, being literate is both power and privilege for our students. I had a high school principal talk to me about his graduation rate and then looking at literacy. And that principal said, who is walking across my stage and what hand am I shaking that is a compromised reader or a compromised writer? And what can we do about that as a system? I hope you see that we're making every effort we can, and every school, I think, is at our side in addressing literacy in Forsyth County. We've come to believe that it is the fuel of the learner profile. It is social emotional learning. It is personalized learning. It is communication. So the principals appreciate the fact that this is almost like a funnel that brings all the pieces of our work together. And that's how they're presenting it to their teachers.
Which is probably why they asked you to make sure it wasn't just something that it started and stopped. This has to go on forever.
That's right. Because we're learners and we're learning. Everything's evolving. I think that this last quote really says it all.
That is so true, Rebecca. I just, listening to you talk, it reminds me of when you and Kristen and Debbie got together and reinvented elementary schools to what we are today. This is that same passion that I see in the three of you. And you're right, it is the fuel. We take it for granted. But when you go in now and they're talking about kindergarten students reading five hundred books. And I'm thinking, are you kidding me? Or a thousand, whatever they're reading. And you see the partnership that is with the library and stuff like that and for the board that Kristen's on, that the way they are partnering with us, kids walking across the street from coming over to the library to get their first cards. And it is more than reading. And having grown up with just going to the library but not really understanding what literacy is, we can see how much difference it is going to be in understanding what you are reading, not just reading a book, but in every aspect of your life. We will have better leaders in the future if we can do this.
I agree. Thank you. We just left a group of principals and they shared with us that they think this work is transformational. So we're all very excited. I've done it a long time, but this is probably the most excited I've been about any of the work I've done.
It really is exciting because I was at a Beyond Propel meeting yesterday, and I'm part of the learning and growth team. And we talked about literacy a lot and the lack of consistency. And it kept, we just kept going back. Every aspect we started talking about, we'd go back to, but we're not consistent, you know? Because we have parents that are even, and they've been redistricted. And they're like, okay, now they're in third grade, but they didn't learn that in second at a different school. Inconsistency, that word just kept coming up. And to me, this is going to bring that consistency that we really need in our system. This is really exciting work.
And I think the word skill is the most important word in that, is that it's a skill. It's not a tool. We used to teach it as a tool. That's the way I was taught. And they tried to teach you how to use that tool. But it's a skill that you have through all things. And so it's a different way to look at it, but it's very foundational.
You know, it gives me the most amount of pride is any district in our state would be proud to have the data that we have when it comes to literacy for our students. But our principals and our entire team look at it as there's an opportunity for some serious growth here if we have a K-12 literacy framework where we're all working together with a common goal and a common mission. And this is where we're going to see truly sustained improvement. So I am thrilled that folks have embraced this work to the level that they have because it would be easy to say, look at our scores, look at us, how we compare with the state of Georgia, look how we compare with any national norm, and rightfully so. But not here. We look at it and say, that's great. We should be proud of that. But what do we need to do to make that next step to get better? And this is truly our next step.
This is quality. This is really in-depth quality.
This is like a good timing with this, to get this basis going with some of the early child, the early meaning pre-K programs that are coming up and in place. If that state program comes, the partnership with the library and the school system, doing these simultaneously, when if they look at that data over ten-year spread, this is going to be the whole package.
Yeah, you're right, Kristen. And it all goes together. And we look at graduation rates, and you have a system ninety-four, ninety-five percent. People ask, well, how do you improve upon that? This is how you make those gains from ninety-five to ninety-six and beyond, hopefully.
Jack's in the pre-K and he's learning his letters. And he asked me last week, why do I want to learn how to read? And I said, because you can do anything if you can read. I mean, if you can read and understand, you can do anything you want to. And I think that's just the key, and they're starting young.
Well, and it's a good time to capture their minds. I got to read at one of the local pre-Ks this week for the National Pre-K Week. And those kids, they don't know you. You walk in the room, they've never met you, thirty, forty kids, and you're reading, and they're just climbing on you like you were their best friend. And they want to read. They want to learn. That excitement. If we could get them going early and keep it going.
I was reading to a little girl midway yesterday morning, and when I left, she goes, you need to come back more often.
It's a deal.
They're so cute.
It's such an easy thing for seniors to do as well, since I'm one, I'll speak up. And when I retire from the board, that's one of my goals is, because I live in a neighborhood of seniors. To make that connection, to read. It's just, there's so many positive things about what you've done. Were you all, did you visit any other school districts or anything that have an initiative quite like this? I didn't think so.
It's unique to Forsyth. It was built by our leaders. It's unique.
That's what impresses me. It came from them. That is wonderful. But thanks for your...
What the analogy to the car manual, I think that's...
Speaking of wanting us to come back, come back to read, we will be back. We have more to share. We'll be back in November to share some things going on in the schools.
More binders?
This is as good as it gets.
It is as good as it gets. Wow. That just blows you away.
This is going to test our literacy.
It is. It's great. The next report, we'll do that as well with Katie Newman, the Wellness Collaborative. I actually heard her speak at the community meeting on suicide and all the things that we had. And I was so impressed with her. I just wanted her to share what she has done to communicate our needs throughout the community and bring that together. So it's all yours, Katie.
Thank you. Well, Katie has done an outstanding job. And her team of social workers and Lindsay Simpson, they kind of bonded together. And if you remember, we were here last year and we kind of gave you a macro view of social emotional learning from cabinet members and how it impacted each department. So it's great to hear it all about in the literacy work. That's so exciting. So today, we're going to get to, or Katie's going to tell you about the work that she's been doing from the student support perspective.
Thank you. Do I just click? I think it's right there. Wow, technology just worked. Must be fun though. And about a year ago, I started on this venture of what are we doing as a school system to help address mental health needs? And as a mental health clinician myself, I was starting to see a lot of things that were therapeutic were really moving into educating students for social emotional learning because as a whole, a lot of our students aren't getting those basics for resiliency and those building blocks of internal assets and external assets, and what does that look like? And decreasing risk factors and how important it is. And we, again, I'm a data fan too, and I started asking different counties how they're addressing mental health, what are they doing to bring in outside help from the community on things that we are not able to do as a school system and partner up. I also asked our school counselors, especially for emergency conference notifications that I was a part of many over the past ten years, how many of those students actually got mental health counseling after that event? And when I got the information from the school counselors, it was about fifty percent. So fifty percent of students shared, had the courage to verbalize that they did not want to live anymore, and they did not get consistent mental health counseling afterwards. And consistent was operationally defined as three or more sessions. So not a lot. Intake, an intake counted as one. So we refer them and families take them to an intake session, but it was, that was about it. We really supported them at school. It was happening. Our school counselors were actually the ones, and our school social workers were the ones intervening with these students because they weren't getting help outside. And I just saw the burden, not only in their voices, but on the counselors and social workers' faces. And I felt like we needed to do something and look at, like, how are we addressing mental health as a whole? And Debbie gave me the opportunity to really have a push like this initiative on how we are looking at mental health. And getting some guidance from the DOE, they talked about, well, absolutely. Here is a model for what this would look like, setting up infrastructure, partnering with community agencies. And so we came up kind of a just a mission statement is really to address a continuum of care for our students, not just prevention and intervention, but postvention. And also looking at a tier model, all students, you know, social emotional learning. And we've been partnering with teaching and learning. We've certainly worked with school safety with the SASs and where we worked with other departments to kind of look at, what do we, what does this look like for not only all of our students with social emotional learning, but when those things aren't, those students don't, aren't understanding it or they're having difficulty, what are we doing at a higher level for those students who aren't? So I love this quote from Ben Franklin because it kind of models what are the tiers look like. Tell me, and I'll forget. Show me, and I may remember. Involve me, and I'll learn. And I think that that is something that we want to help those students that aren't understanding at that, you know, at the school-wide level of those initiatives that we're doing. So like Debbie said, and I, and teaching and learning shared, we look at the social emotional competencies for CASL. And CASL, the circle down below is such a cool image because it looks at the five areas and attribute of what we should provide students the opportunity to learn with curriculum, instruction, school-wide practices and policies, and also family and community partnerships. And that's where I come in. It's funny because Henry County presented with them, with DOE, to different regions, and Henry County called me the closer. Because they're like, how do you get so many community agencies to partner with? And I said, honestly, we have an amazing community. We've got a lot of resources, guys. We just need to connect. We need to find where the needs and gaps are. We need to find what we're doing well. Let's emphasize those and let's communicate those to our families.
Let me interrupt you, Katie, if you don't mind. Over fall break, I'm not sure you're even all aware, but we were asked to present to the State Board of Education. And we had a team go down, give up their own time over fall break to make that very important presentation. And I just wanted to publicly say thank you guys again for doing that. I mean, that was very important.
Thank you. And I appreciate the opportunity. And Cheryl Benefield is now on speed dial. I talked to her all the time. Sheena at Consult. But really going from developmentally as well, going from a fixed mindset to a growth mindset, that's what we're really hoping students can understand. And sometimes they get stuck or they get, it's hard for them to understand how to get into that growth mindset. Like if you succeed, if my buddy succeeds, I fail. And that's a fixed mindset. If my buddy succeeds, I'm inspired. And I can, and I, and we're community. We're all connected. And that personal connection is very limited with a lot of our technology advancements. So taking that therapeutic and the different modalities with that and combining it with the CASL competencies and the tools that they're giving us is a beautiful blend to collaborate across all departments in moving forward. Social emotional learning impacts all districts. And these are just, and you've seen a lot of these. What I think is pretty cool is going into a school and they've created their own culture of change. And whatever catalyst they use, I like using the word catalyst because character education sounds like, you know, a little old school. But, you know, using a catalyst platform like the Seven Mindsets or the CED program, that's really awesome going on at Denmark and DeSena. Certainly, a lot of these others have great interventions at the school level. But also, a lot of them go out to the classroom, I mean, not only to the classroom, but in the communities. Prevention supports. Lindsay is not here. Still maternity leave, and I miss her dearly because this is her kind of world. But mentoring, how important it is to have a mentor. I love Mr. Rogers. Rogers was my maiden name, so my dad was Mr. Rogers. And the unconditional positive regard that he had and what he showed for children was phenomenal. And that's what we want. We want teachers to look at a student with two different eyes, you know, one to challenge and one to care. But to have a mentor that it's all about the relationship, that they're not requiring anything back of them like teachers require them to recite information back. Coaches require them to run plays or them to learn certain things. And parents require their kids to make their bed, you know, have a certain behavior expectation. But mentors are just there to connect with them and to find commonality. And that program is phenomenal. And I just, again, like I, when I get asked to go talk to different senior neighborhoods, I'm all about it because I do feel like that there's something that we can all give, no matter age, no matter your background, that you can find commonality with anyone. Our suicide prevention program, Signs of Suicide, we are doing that in all of seventh and ninth grade. Our school counselors are doing an awesome job. I was over at West last week and helped with that, doing several emergency conferences. So I think students were identified or they self-identified themselves as really struggling with that. And getting them to those resources is so important and connecting with families. Sources of strength is more of a peer-to-peer model that is rolling out in some of the schools, which is a great source when you look at peers and how they interact and go. And they're more likely to go to their peer about some suicidal ideation and difficulties than they are an adult. So that's just another layer of intervention, another layer of strength that we can have for our schools. Substance use prevention, of course, we have the grant, I Have a Choice campaign. I hope you've seen the billboards around the community and county. I love seeing it, super parent supervised. That's my favorite. Intervention and postvention, addressing barriers to access mental health services for students and families. We created a partnership model with mental health providers because we're too big to have just one agency serve our community. And plus, I like having a choice, giving parents a choice. Like we have several agencies that have agreed to come see your student at school because you have transportation barriers or you don't get off work until later. Or maybe there's a family issue, you're doubled up, homeless situation, where therapy in the home is not conducive. So we created those partnership models. Menu of community supports to school counselors and admin. I think that's awesome. Our schools are really responding to that, our school counselors. And it's really just giving, we went to our partner agencies and said, do you have any presentations that, about a certain issue that you'd like to present to parents for free? And they, you know, at some of the schools to help with the parent nights that they have going on. And then also providing any sort of support groups. North Georgia's, a north, hospice of North Georgia, sorry, does free grief groups. We have a lot of situations where students have either a death of a loved one or they have an adult in their life with a long-term illness. And they provide free support for that. And I think that's very crucial. And they do small groups so students know that I'm not alone. This friend over here is having, is going through that same thing. And we can kind of talk together about what we're going through to create community. Grants for families for financial barriers. We've been really lucky to get a two-and-a-half-year grant through United Way to provide financial resources for families that they're either, they're underinsured or uninsured. So if their copay's too high, they just don't want, can't afford it, that's another barrier that we want to address. And when I did this survey two years ago, or a year and a half ago rather, with the school counselors, the top two barriers that they felt like for families was lack of access and financial reasons. And so that's why I wanted to make sure we addressed that. Increased school staff supports for students, again, the mentoring, the wellness programs, which I'll talk about in just a minute. Supporting school counselors with community supports and trainings. A lot of school counselors, even though they're qualified to do a lot of these groups and a lot of these interventions, they just don't have the time. They're doing a lot of other things. And I know that the need is increasing. Um, they're, they're doing a lot of other things, and um, I know that, that, the, the need is, is increasing. And so I wanted to make sure that they, that they had the support that they need, that if they couldn't do it, um, then they, that we would have community agencies that could come in and, and support for those areas that they just can't get to. Um, mindfulness-based strategies in classrooms and special groups, and utilizing a lot of those skill-based things with different therapeutic modalities. Um, I'm sure you've heard mindfulness um quite a bit, um, but that's in all, a lot of different therapeutic modalities that we, that therapists use. But we can take those skills, um, the skill level and the language to help students kind of understand um at their level. And not all size shoe, size fits all. So looking at different modalities for different, um, you know, for different uh schools is important too, to kind of give that menu to school counselors. Because they know their school, they know their students. And then increased school staff support for um students. Um, we, we talked about, I think, some of those. Um, supporting school counselors um with the caseloads, implementing psychoeducational skill mindfulness-based strategies. Sorry, I think that was a duplicate, here we go. Improving training, skills and support. Um, a lot of times we, we talk about um training um and resources, but also skill building is important with staff with, and, and with our school counselors and school social workers, and even our administrators, any sort of um, uh, special education facilitators, anything that we have that, um, that work closely with students. We want them to be equipped if there is a disclosure of any sort of suicidal ideation or prodromal symptoms for um a mental health crisis. So ASSIST is Applied Suicide Intervention School Training, and that's a two-day interactive workshop that we are going to offer um school staff. And SAFE Talk is one day, those are just two different um levels. Mental Health First Date is something that, it's just about mental health awareness. So I think it's good for any teacher or any um school staff that doesn't know a whole lot about mental health and the mental health diagnoses, and what does that look like, what are the symptoms? So they can be aware and be able to identify or help um anyone that they know um get access to mental health services. Um, NAMI, Ending the Silence, and also Georgia State University, uh, they have a child welfare collaborative that we are partnering with. And they offer Trauma 101, Brain 101 trainings for, um, for educators. And so we partnered with them to help us with the DCD Day, so we have offerings for mental health for our, um, for our staff. Um, for South County Schools, Annual Crisis Team Review, and that's really when we get together, we um pick a few counselors that have had a lot of emergency conferences, some administrators that have been involved in some, you know, threat assessments or suicidal ideation, and just kind of look at, look at what happened this year, how did it go, what could we improve on? Looking at our current documents, we even reached out to other school systems, and I know we adapted ours this year. Gilfroy took a lot of information from Henry County because they had questions from that suicidal ideation that was age-appropriate developmentally. Because there were some questions that weren't appropriate to ask an elementary school student. But we just had one, like, questionnaire for all students, K-12. So just adapting it every year, just kind of making it better. Mental health surveys, um, I think that's important for our mental health um grant. We ask student teachers and, um, and what's, yeah, student, teacher and parent to fill out surveys to give us an understanding of where the student is. And so we can also do a post-test and see, has the intervention helped, or how's the student doing after having mental health intervention? A lot of it isn't very long because we can't afford to, with the grant, pay for ongoing therapy. And of course, complex trauma, you need on, a lot of more intensive counseling than 12 weeks. But we said that we would, um, the grant reads that up to 12 sessions. Um, so, which you all signed, don't know why I'm explaining that, y'all. You reviewed it and approved it, so I appreciate that. And then again, local agencies, staff and parent nights training. So to end, um, we have a total wellness collaborative that um we are, we are working um on and really partnering with communities. And when we started those conversations, that's when we got um support from nonprofits, faith communities. Brownsbridge gave us um some um money to help with even uh parents getting counseling that didn't have, that aren't, were uninsured. Because a lot of Medicaid families, that just covers the student, doesn't cover the parent, if they've got substance use issues or domestic violence history and things like that. Um, Partners in Education, working with Hannah, um, just um onboard for um companies or businesses that want to help support wellness. And then educational institutions, um, we're talking with um, uh, different graduate programs for counseling just to kind of see how they can, they can um help us, because they are in our community, um, and we want to kind of partner with them. And then um our mental health council, which um puts on the Suicide Forum, that Anne attended. I'm a part of that in just looking at what are we doing, not only for students, but for adults too, that suffer from uh suicidal ideation. And the, the, really the hopelessness, because that's, that's really what we're talking about, is not having hope. And then the Healthy Children's Conference, I met with CHOA and YMCA and Northside Forsyth about doing a Healthy Children's, um, or I think they're calling it a Healthy Kids Festival, where we bring in, um, it's, it's going to take place at a park or maybe at Northside, where we um bring awareness to um what wellness looks like and all the different wellness attributes that are on this little wellness wheel here. And then looking at um what community resources can they go to if they're interested in doing something more to promote wellness within their family. And our, our wellness growth model, um, that we, and that we've kind of collaborated with, that has, it, it kind of grown exponentially. Uh, when we started doing this, we um met with different nonprofits, businesses, doctors, um, and governmental agencies and said, what are we doing well, and what are the needs and gaps in these eight areas of wellness? And looking at those needs and gaps, what can we do? And, and what kept coming up over and over again was communication, was parenting, um, how do we help our parents in the community? And to enrich wellness. And so we took that information and we crafted kind of some different um modes of communication, uh, little short videos and even um podcasts that we get a panel of local people from Forsyth. I think it makes a difference when you have local people and local um doctors or law enforcement, um, coaches that talk about what, you know, what struggles they are having. Because we want to listen to our community, connect with them, and make sure that they know, hey, it's normal to have struggles in different areas of wellness. And then mobilize them, activate, what can they, what can we do, where can they go if they want to learn more, or if they want to grow in that, that particular area? And so that is it. Do you have any questions?
You see why I was impressed with all the work she's done connecting all the dots? And when you look at the kids and what they have to face nowadays, it's not like what we had to face growing up. It's, Steve Hahn said, it's just a different, these kids are fragile. And they are faced with so many more issues than we ever were faced with when we were children. And so to see, again, the proactiveness of people like Debbie Smith and what you've done, Katie, is just tremendous in, in helping us get to where we need to be. Because if we don't help our children understand how to be balanced and reach for help when you need help, it's just, our world's a mess right now, and this is one step in helping that, so thanks for what you do. Does anybody have any questions?
No, I like that you're reaching beyond just the students, because I think some of it, Anne touched on it, to me, it's balance. As a parent, we're, we're used to busy days and going stress rest, and I think we teach our kids that. And it's time that we as adults, as parents, learn how to slow down and take their pressure off our kids to, to achieve so much. There's got to be a balance in life, so I like that you're looking at it from all angles, partnering with the community.
And also that financial aid piece too for parents, and that has been a longtime problem. And having members in my family that have been through counseling and still go to counseling, it is an ongoing expense, it's not usually covered by insurance. But it's so key to being successful, is that ongoing support really is important.
Yeah, I heard over the weekend, a, a foundation started a program called ME, it's called Mind Education. And they're teaching about the brain and how it works, and that's one of the items that I've gained, uh, being on the board and really focusing on the brain and how important that is to this whole thinking of learning. And mental health is just a part of that, and it's how it works. And you have to learn that, so it's kind of interesting to see all of this come about and understand it at that level. But yeah, I think you're right, community knowledge is nine-tenths of this.
Right.
And it's, it's a, it takes a village, right? And we have to teach the whole village.
We do.
And yeah, the, the children are, I mean, all children are wired to please. They're wired for that. And so when we teach adults about that, like, look, they want to please you, they want to be connected with you. Um, you know, and look at different ways to engage, and look at the neurology behind that is awesome. Uh, I mean, we know so much more than we ever did. And so I, I was at a parent night this week at South Middle, and um, I told them, I said, when you're, you know, the doors are slamming and eye rolls and the, you know, your teenager is like, you know, making these ga- audible gasps, you can just think back to yourself, wow, I've got a, I've got a really healthy teenager, there's a lot of healthy children going on. Because it is, I mean, that neurologically, their limbic system, their emotional memory, that's what's growing. And that's what they're craving, they're craving that connection, and those experiences create that. And so we want to create meaningful experiences too. Um, even just with the, in the classroom, the presentations they're doing, it's just phenomenal.
As part of your presentation, did you have the list of the different community partners you were working with?
I did, I think that, I don't think that's on the presentation.
Okay, it's on, it's on that, okay, great. I, I just wanted you to take note of that. I mean, we have a lot of folks in the community at the table, this is not just a school system initiative, it's truly a community initiative. And uh, it's going really, really well. Everybody's working well together because we all understand, you know, it's a challenge we all face.
I think that it's, it's good that, just being a school social worker and working with a lot of these agencies for a long time, it was, it was good that we, I was able to lever, well, I mean, really leverage our school relationships that we've had with, our teams had, and just kind of say, hey, let's take this up a level. Let's do some macro social work here, let's do, let's look, look at the community efforts.
I'd like to talk to you about that, about the Healthy Kids Festival sometime with the parks, because that's something I'd be interested in helping out with. We've been looking for some festival ideas. Uh, Play in the Park this past week had ten thousand five hundred people come, and that was a huge turnout, Free Family Festival that they have every year, I mean, ten thousand five hundred.
That's a hu- yeah, that was impressive.
So um, I'd like to talk to you about that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie, so much. It's just awesome, the talent we have in this, in our school district, all the hard work that goes into that.
It's nice that they have time to work on these projects where years gone by, we didn't have that at the central level.
That's true.
Or in the community, I mean, we've always had good community support, but it has gotten to a really deep level, that's wonderful. Um, any requests for future agenda items?
Sounds like we're busy.
All right, this time our action item on drug prevention and counseling agreement, Mr. Drew Hayes. I know the good partnership.
Okay, hey, y'all, this is the, uh, I was asked to, Matt Myers had approached me um from Insight about an idea that they had had, um, and Cindy Mills, he and Cindy Mills had spoken at a drug council outside of a big summit outside of the state. Um, had it, started a discussion about something that the county commission could do to help support our school system potentially. Um, I approached Joey, approached Dr. Beard, and just said, are you all okay with me pursuing this and having this conversation? Um, and, and it sort of went from there. So anyway, this was the presentation that I gave uh on September 11th, it was Matt, um, and myself. Again, he's the director of Insight, it's located in Roswell, uh, and it works with youth and, and young adults who, who are dealing with dependency issues. Uh, and then I think y'all know who I am at this point, and Gateway Academy was a big part of this uh conversation. Opioid crisis is a tremendous problem in the United States, uh, but very specifically is a tremendous problem right here in this triangle. Uh, Forsyth County is a part of that issue, that's, this is a law enforcement issue, this is a health issue, um, on down the line. The average age of treatment at Insight uh is twenty-two for students that are dealing with an opioid addiction, uh, on through a heroin, a full-on heroin, um, addiction. One of the things that Matt has seen over and over again is, right now, the most common, when he first started doing this, he said, ten or fifteen years ago, people would bring their children, they were fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years old, and they were smoking marijuana and maybe doing something else along those lines. But that was the primary issue. He says what he sees now are eighteen-to-twenty-five-year-olds who are full-on heroin addicts, and that this is the first time they are being brought in. Um, he said one of the common denominators was a tremendous amount of marijuana use, starting often in age thirteen or fourteen, and that that's kind of gone unabated, um, along these lines. One of the things he talks about is, I can do a lot with a fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, or eighteen-year-old who's doing those things. It's much more difficult to do something with someone who's nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, onto twenty-five, who has a full-blown either just uh painkiller addiction or, or heroin addiction. Um, one of the things that they were trying to do, they were trying to take the money that they had been given, uh, some federal money that was coming in for various things, and how could they address at-risk youth, and how could they address drug issues with at-risk youth? So they started looking at the county, and they started looking where all people were located, and they started trying to look at foster kids, and they started trying to look at MV kids, and how would they get them there, or how would they transport them? Uh, and Matt told Cindy Mills, Drew has like a huge percentage of them on one hallway, uh, in one location in the county, and they're every single day. Um, he said, that would be where I would start and then grow out, grow out from there. Um, at Gateway Academy, seventy percent of our high school students come to us because they've had a drug or an alcohol offense. That's kind of typical data over the last two or, two or three years, it's not a hundred percent accurate for right this moment, but it's pretty close. Overall, we're there. Um, when we ask our students, okay, are you doing drugs or alcohol, or is this a thing, about eighty percent of them say at least, at least weekly, yes.
That'd be pretty typical though, of most school districts across the state.
I would, I don't, I don't think this is, I don't think this is atypical, no. I think this is a, is a national, is a national issue, certainly.
So we have, we have zero tolerance, but when we hear it's their first time ever having a drink, that's generally not the case.
I, I would say no. That is typically not the case. Um, so anyway, drug and alcohol use are one of the issues, um, obviously, that we see. Again, what we're looking to do is address this as much as possible with prevention, um, because coming on the back end of it is, is so costly and so dangerous. Again, if you've been to the Drug Summit, and I know most of you have been, you hear Sheriff Freeman speak, et cetera, and they talk about Narcan, and they talk about having to send uh folks out to resuscitate people and do it again and again and again. This, this is not a successful approach. If you look at Gateway, obviously, this is our largest at-risk population. We served two-hundred-and-four students last year, ages eleven to nineteen. Um, and these are just the basic list off of Infinite Campus of wider range of, of, of what we see. We've got a large number of second language learners, we have a large number of uh MV or homeless, uh, we have a decent number of gifted students. Uh, we literally hit the, the full, the full gamut um at, at Gateway Academy. But again, drug use ends up being the number one uh issue that we see over and over and over again.
It affects everybody.
It does, it does. Um, what are we currently doing? Well, one of the things that Matt came and has come for years, and he has volunteered and run a little group, one group for one hour, uh, and done some things, but did it on a totally voluntary basis for years. Um, last year after, and, and, and we had all spoken about this on our, on our trip that, that we had taken together, and I'd spoken with Tom specifically about it as well, I, I had approached him out, what would it take to do something more than this? How do we get at least one more level down from where we are? And he came back and said, Drew, I really think if I want to keep doing what I'm doing, but I'll bring a counselor, and we could run a group on two days a week, and then I'll also do individual counseling, I'll continue my volunteering, and this is what it would cost to do two, two hours a week, um, et cetera. And so I, I turned in a grant uh to Beaver Toyota, we were awarded it, we used that last year and think it was very, very successful. Um, and then luckily, one of the things I proposed in our budget was, this needs to be ongoing. We don't want a grant to run out and then not be able to do it, so, so we've done that at this point. Uh, so much so that literally to this, with FVA, there was some money left over from what we had done with summer school things, with enrollments and some of that. I diverted some of that money to create a whole second group, we're now running two groups simultaneously as of this last week. Because we got one group of fifteen going and didn't want new people coming in and out of it at that point, because they had established trust. And then I'm accepting about seven kids, all of whom have had a drug or alcohol offense coming in, and I didn't want to tell them, no, you can't, you can't do anything at that point. So currently, that's, that's what we have going, and again, Matt stepping up and doing some individual counseling outside of that as well, but that's what we currently have. Um, what we proposed, what they came to us with is, what if we funded a full-time drug counselor for, for you all? Um, and what I had said was, I'm, I'm totally on board with that. I want that person based at Gateway, but then the, the caveat that I want to put out is, my average kid stays for a semester. my average kid stays for a semester. I want there to be some support for them when they walk out that door, when they go to the next school. And I know that maybe off the bat, we can't do it everywhere, but I'm in charge of FA, and it's a mile and a half down the road, and you would have my permission if you wanted to go do that. And could I please approach Mitch Young and see about us being able to walk across the street to Forsyth Central and touch base with these kids who might need it? And maybe even run a group there for free that students would, would need as well, based on, based on needs of that, of that place. And Mitch was fantastic in, in saying he'd absolutely support that. The counselor's role, to develop a positive culture, peer culture of support, because one of the things that we have, obviously, is the kids are feeding off of one another, and they are getting drugs from one another, they are encouraging one another in these, in these behaviors. What they want to do is be able to say, okay, we've got a positive culture, but we're going to choose items and we're going to help support one another in not participating in this moving forward. If we had a full-time counselor, obviously, there would be somebody they could check in with all day long going, okay, I'm, I'm struggling, because I know I'm going to go home with such and such today, or I'm going here. And they would have an opportunity to talk specifically to that person about that issue. And again, it is a tremendous need. If, if, if you speak to our kids, that's what they're gonna, that's what they're gonna express. Again, that there would be ongoing group counseling, so however many groups we need to run, we would be able to run it, because if somebody was there, it would be there. And then also, one of the things they do is they set up activities and things that they do of, you can go and do stuff that is not drug and alcohol involved, that is a possibility. And for some of the kids right now, when you talk to them, they go, there's nowhere I can go at this point. Like, everywhere I go, everywhere my friends go, everywhere that I'm involved after school, these are the things that people are engaged in. Where, how do I make these other connections or do these other things so that I'm, so that I'm not, I'm not going to do that? And this was, this was, this was the idea. Are there any questions for me?
I mean, I'll say this is not a, a new thing. This has been going on for some time. And we, you know, I watched it grow, and with the kids, through one of our first four-day classes that we're doing out of Gateway, once they've been tribunal and they have that issue, they'll go through this four-night class, and one of the kids spoke up after first class and said, one of the most important things they did was having a small group's time to talk to each other about a focused topic like this. And they said they've never had that experience. Nobody's ever given them that opportunity to come together as a group. So I've seen this grow and grow to where we're at now, and, you know, it's the, still the precipice, it has more room to grow within the county, because I, I mentioned, you know, Drew and Matt both, and I said, while we're here, and this is great for this population, and we want to take our graduation up, these are the pockets that we have to really hit at. But it's not known so, so much about graduation rate, it's about the health of that, that student, and what we're talking about with mental health. But coming now, looking at it from a perspective of the whole county, trying to think, what can we do with the kids in all schools? How can we grow this, what's good about it, what's working? How does this help them in their education, not just with their substance abuse? But a lot of times, they'll start substance abuse because that's fun as a kid. And what the emphasis this is, is that it's fun not to be high, to be sober, and that you can have fun, and what that fun looks like. And I've seen that Inside in particular has a success rate of about 80% with these adolescents that go through, and a lot of them, like you said, were older hardcore heroin. My son went through it. I saw him recover from it, and he's now doing absolutely the same thing out in Phoenix, and really seeing some results come from it. So it's an exciting thing to fix this issue in our current culture.
Thank you for what you're doing.
Drew, if you pull up that IGA, it should be part of the presentation screen, I hope it is. Or if you, okay, if the board wants to pull it up on their own.
It's a recommendation?
It is, and it's really in two parts. We do have the, and correct me if I say something wrong, the county commissioners have already voted the funding for their piece of it. There is a secondary piece, which is through the sheriff's office, through, through drug seizure money. That, those details should be ironed out in the next day or two. So what Mr. Gerard, the county attorney, has recommended we do, and I, and I agreed with it, is that I will ask you to approve the contract between the Board of Education and the County Commission tonight. Once the sheriff's piece has been included, and it will be later this week, I'll bring that back next week, and we'll vote on that as well. Just so that we don't stop the flow of any funding, number one, and two, also, the securing of the counselor to, to start by November 1st. Is that correct, Drew?
I believe that's correct.
So if that makes sense to you, anybody have any questions? Okay, with that, I would recommend approval of the intergovernmental agreement between the Board of Education and the County Commissioners.
Is there a motion to move?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Tom, a second from Nancy, any other comments, discussion?
Sounds great, nice partnership.
Okay, yeah, it's a great partnership, and we'll bring part two back to you next week when we get the sheriffs. And that was just, just so you know, there was some question about how that money could be utilized, and, and they've worked it out to where they feel confident now that the sheriff can give, I think it's $10,000, help us in this program. So now it's just a matter of putting it in writing, and then we'll bring that back to you next week. But to your point, whoever said that, I so appreciate, again, it's a good example of our community coming together to address an issue and providing us some resources that we could, we absolutely need to, to help these kids. And I had the opportunity to visit Gateway last week and saw some of the mindfulness training that's going on there, and just, you know, kids learning how to, to talk through issues and how to breathe and, and how to cope. I mean, all these very, very important skills. And I think we're doing tremendous work at Gateway, but this will allow us to add a layer that we don't have in place yet, that we desperately need. Those are some, we have some great kids at Gateway who have just made some, some poor mistakes and have caught up into something right now where they need our help and our support to get them back on the right track, and this will help us do that. So thank you for that, and thank the County Commissioners and our sheriff for working with us. And Drew, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Drew, for your lady show.
Thanks, Josh.
That's great.
Perb. Good stuff tonight.
All right, motion to go on executive session for personnel and land issues?
So moved, second.
Motion from Nancy, a second from Tom, all in favor?